Five, Planning Commission. And I will just read this quickly. The public can access and participate in the meeting through information posted on the Albemarle County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Albemarle County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific agenda items where input is invited. So with that, I'll establish a quorum. May we have a roll, please?
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Missel.
Here.
Mr. Carizana.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk is absent today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have more than a quorum. Next, we'll move on to item two, Public Comment on Matters Pending Before the Commission, but not listed on this agenda. Would anybody here this evening like to speak to any matters not on the agenda? Is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second. Any discussion? Hey, we have the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Mr. Missel.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think we're on to the public hearings and we'll begin with SP 2025-4 Northridge Preschool. And I'll ask for the staff report.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Sid Cho. I'm a senior planner with the planning division for the county's community development department. Tonight, I'll be giving staff's presentation for, oh, is it Sharon on the screen?
Sorry.
I will be officially giving staff's presentation for special use permit, SB-2025-4 Northridge Preschool. This is a special use permit request to amend an existing special use permit to increase the total enrollment and hours of operation for a preschool. The subject property is approximately 9.92 acres and located at 5100 Dickerson Road, which is approximately one and a half miles south of the county line with Green County and is just north of the place's 29 development area. It is owned rural areas and the comprehensive plan designates it as rural areas. The surrounding properties are all zoned rural areas and include other religious assembly uses and single-family residences beyond the adjacent properties. The subject property is home to the Northridge Community Church of Nazarene, which was first approved by a special use permit for the church in 2000 and the preschool was first established in 2003. There is an active special use permit that was approved in 2006 that allows a maximum enrollment of 80 students. The applicant's requesting to increase the student enrollment from 80 students to 100 students and to increase the hours of operation from 7:30 a.m. to 1 o'clock p.m. to 6 o'clock a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. The special use permit application was reviewed under the factors for consideration as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the proposed special use permit will not be detrimental to adjacent parcels, will not change the character of the nearby area, will continue to be in harmony with the rural area zoning district, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are three recommended conditions for this application. The first two are related to the applicant's proposal and the third is carryover from the previously approved special use permit. The intent is to preserve the existing woodland on the property. In sum, there are three positive aspects. The first is the proposal is consistent with the review criteria for special use permits contained in the zoning ordinance. The second is the proposal provides a preschool slash daycare option for community members who live and work in the area. And third, there are no detrimental impacts to adjoining properties are anticipated. Staff found no concerns. Staff recommends approval with the conditions as recommended in the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission now.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions for staff? No? All right. Great, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is an applicant who would like to speak to this matter. Thanks. If you could just state your name for the record and your general location or residence.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Debbie Swanson and I'm the director of the Northridge Preschool. I'm here to provide a brief overview of our preschool and the purpose of our request and how our program serves the families and a broader community of our county. Our preschool is a religious-exempt child day center serving ages three to six years of age. We focus on providing a safe and nurturing, developmentally appropriate environment that supports children's social, emotional, cognitive, physical, and eventually kindergarten readiness needs. We are requesting approval for an addendum to our current special use permit by increasing our student enrollment from 80 to 100 students and extending our hours from 7:30 to 1:30 currently to 6 a.m. to 6 p.m. This step is essential for us to accommodate the additional demands from our local families to ensure compliance with the county planning and safety standards and operate long-term in a way that aligns with the county's developmental goals. And in a recent report, just this week, I saw where Jason Grant for Albemarle County Public Schools, they've just added some classrooms there as well. And I've worked in the county schools and I know the need well. So I was pleased to see that. There is significant growth and demand for a high-quality early education in our area. Parents frequently report challenges finding accessible quality care and wait lists that are very long for local programs. And so we need to have that increase. Our preschool helps address these families and gives them a great opportunity to work in with us. School readiness with strong early literacy and pre-math foundations is very important. And in that same article that I read just this week, Meredith Lassio, LaCassio actually, Vice President of School Readiness, talked about how 90% of the brain development of children happened before age five. So it's so important for their life foundationally, you know, as they move forward, not only in their education, but in their life. We want to partner with you in making sure as many children as possible can have access to a quality program. Community stability is very important and we want to offer that and reliable care. We have carefully designed our operations to minimize the impact surrounding the neighborhood. We've tried to strategically stagger our drop-off times and pickup times so that there's a lower impact to the roads noise. I can't think of a better noise than children playing, but also we want to make sure not to disturb our neighbors. And so we're specifically coming out at times when we know they're probably at work or also out busy in their day as well. Safety, we want to provide strict safety protocols, fenced outdoor playgrounds, and we provide supervised access control. Approving our request will bring several community benefits. Increased access to early education for more children, support for local employers and the workforce, positive economic impact by employing our staff and welcoming new members there, enhancing the county's overall family-friendly infrastructure. It's very important as well. So we are just here to help and want to be a part of that in serving you.
Great, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bivens.
Good to see you. Thank you for being here this evening. So I've just got a couple of housekeeping pieces that I was trying to figure out. I was, as I was looking at your, at your website and also at your location. So number one, I don't know who you would disturb given that there's only three churches there and your church and your church across the street, the Presbyterians are the only ones who are doing something like that.
Right.
Well, you know, maybe those wild turkeys. And I saw that sign said they would be concerned about what you do up there. But you know, one never knows. And so when I was looking, two things, I don't, one is, I don't, when I look at your website, I see that you already have a full, you have listed a full-day program that goes from 7:30 to 4:30 p.m.
That is correct.
Okay, so that, so that what you're doing tonight is trying to bring this in alignment to what you're doing.
That is correct.
And I add an hour, add an hour and add two hours at the back end.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that makes more sense to me because I'm like, I don't understand what we're doing here. Then the other piece that I don't, I was sort of trying to wrestle with. If you can hold in your mind Classroom 107 and Classroom 107, I assume that's a big room that you can put a median down?
It is a wall that's black.
It's like Classroom 107A and Classroom 107B.
Correct.
Okay. So I get the other ones, 103, 101, 102, 104, all the way up to 108. Those are hard-walled, quad-room classrooms of which, right now, you're saying the census there is 10, 10 students.
That is currently what the state allows.
Yeah. Then I didn't really didn't understand if, I mean, I'm also going to assume, going back to 108, 107A, 107B, that some part of the, some part of the week, there are only three-day students.
That's correct.
And then another part of the week is two-day students.
That's correct.
But the census never exceeds 10, 10, 10 students.
That's correct.
So there was a my rub. I don't know what you're doing here talking to us because I don't see what the problem is. If the census is only 10, 10 children per day in 107A and 107B, you're always at 80 students unless you're going to tell me some of these classrooms are going to go more than eight, within 10 students.
Currently, that's where we are currently. But our hope in gaining more students is that we can utilize more of the building.
Ah, okay. That would be helpful when you go to the next stage, tell them that. Because my concern is like, why is this, why is this even in front of us?
Right.
Because you can only have, according to the layout that's here,
that's.
Is only, is only 80 students.
Right.
Okay. So I think it would be helpful for you to tell that when you go to the next, okay?
Good to know, thank you.
Now, the next piece I'm going to say is probably a bit more Julian, trying not to be persnickety. But my colleagues know that's a really hard thing for me. So when I go to your website, I couldn't get some of your links to work, particularly the one with photos. Because I was trying to get a sense if this was a, a preschool of diverse children.
We do.
Because you have one of the, you have a couple of your things, we have diverse images, but then when I went down, I couldn't see. So that, you know, that goes to the point, are we really helping the community?
Right.
Now, some people would say, yeah, we're really helping the community because the community is that. I get that. But I was trying to figure out as a, as a, as a different kind of institution, just how much were we helping the community when I couldn't see anybody who looked like different children from one another at the community?
I'm not sure why that link doesn't currently work. I can check on that.
I would suggest you do that before you go to the next step.
Yes, sir. But we do have many.
It just has to be diverse. You don't have to get, I couldn't validate when someone makes statements like you made, that this is, this is a place that's going to reach out into community. I couldn't validate that.
Sure.
So the next thing that I do when I'm getting persnickety is ask you these questions like, really, just how welcoming is this school that's trying to help the entire community?
Yes, sir.
Chair, that's all I needed to be persnickety about this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Commissioner Murray, any? No questions, thanks.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm always a big fan of these proposals as a father with two young kids and two working parents and being able from six to six is lifesaving for a mother and a father who's, who's both working. I'm curious if you could talk a little bit about what drives the 100-student cap? Is it the building code or the program? It's just for the growth demand that I could see happening, 20 students doesn't sound like a lot. So I was just curious how you land on that number.
Facility itself currently, it would have to have some pretty extensive renovations.
Got it.
And to add too many more students than that. The actual space itself, adding 10 children per classroom for the additional classrooms we'd like to use, it would add.
Got you. Thank you.
Great, that was my question too. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so, so you're, the sister congregation across the driveway, the one in the back doesn't have any preschool, but the, the, the one across also seems to be, this is an idea at some point, that if you all could come together and perhaps you could actually offer a significant number of seats between those two churches.
It's a great idea.
Notwithstanding, the one in the back doesn't do anything like that, but, and that's not that far. I mean, you could, you could easily think about how you do that. If this is really about serving the community.
Yes, sir.
Then there's a way to add capacity inexpensively with just a bit of brotherly and sisterly love.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak to this matter? All right, seeing none, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Just gonna, the proposal is fine by me. That's not a problem at all. I think, you know, this is pretty straightforward. I do think though, and this is something that I'd like to telegraph to the Board of Supervisors for future consideration, is the degree to which we have privatized what is, needs to be a public good. And that is, you know, pre-K, preschool, early learning needs to be a public good. Not to say that, that preschools like yours aren't, aren't fine and wonderful institutions, just that, you know, we have public schools that start at age five. But as our presenter and as lots and lots of research shows, like really the need for support and brain development and pre-K readiness and social readiness and learning needs to be there much earlier and we have not invested our tax resources into that. We have bright stars, but that's very limited and, and very sort of both income limited and age limited and, and difficult. There's waiting lists everywhere and, and I would like to see us move in a really progressive direction on this, where we treat our children as the public investment and a public good and the money goes with it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just add, it's not just, I don't, I don't want to call it a progressive thing. I want to say that there's also an economic benefit to it. So I don't want to call us progressive, so let's not left and right it. Let's just, let's do the thing that I do well, which is let's talk about the economic benefit of being able to offer to people who are coming to the community, to employers who are coming to this community, that we can offer your families, we can offer your people, your employees, a full suite of opportunities for their children and their families. And that's not a left and a right thing. That's the thing about being good to kids.
Any other comments?
Oh, that's right. We have a few.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, you say it's going there.
Both twice. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of SB 2025-0004 Northridge Preschool with conditions stated in the staff report.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Now, could you call the roll, please?
All right. Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Carizana.
Hi.
Mr. Missel.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to item number five, which I assume is not a public hearing item, right? It is a presentation, but it's also not a work session. So I'm trying, okay. The presentation update. Great, and it's ZTA 2022-2, zoning modernization phase updates.
There we go. Thank you and good, good evening, members of the commission. My name is Leah Brumfield. I'm a senior planner two in the zoning division of community development. And today I will present to you an update on our zoning modernization project. AC44 was recently adopted, so now we are working diligently to incorporate it into the ordinance. And so today's presentation will be an information sharing update on how that is coming about. Briefly, we're going to start with a reminder of project goals, which have been simplified into four objectives. Following that, we'll talk about the work we have completed to date, what AC44 and best planning practices will mean for the zoning ordinance and the phased approach we're taking to accomplish our project goals. Finally, we'll wrap up with next steps. I know we're going to have a lot of questions probably, but I would request we hold our questions to the end because a lot of questions are probably going to answered on the slides following whatever slide instigates the questions. So distilling the many paragraphs of beautiful descriptive evocative goals we've written for this project throughout ROI's, early evaluations and presentations, we have distilled this into four bullet points. We want to rewrite the ordinance for clarity and ease of use. We want to streamline administrative processes for both efficiency and appropriate use of staff and legislative body time. We want to align the ordinance with AC44 comprehensive plan. We want to update the ordinance overall for modern best practices that meet the needs of the county today. So the first phase, which we're calling the foundation phase, is complete. In this phase, which we worked with the aid of local governmental consulting agency, the Berkeley Group on, we consulted staff and the development community stakeholder through interviews. We had two-on-twos with the planning commission members, which you'll remember. And the Berkeley Group provided a general review of the zoning ordinance against best practices and our project goals from our resolutions of intent, ending up with a zoning ordinance evaluation document, which is very lengthy. At the end of that evaluation stage, we drafted new articles of the ordinance throughout that establishing a consistent language pattern, tone of language, and a format structure that will be used throughout the new ordinance. We also condensed and simplified some of the administrative processes where we could, extensively involving each community development team involved in that application. And then at the end of that drafting process, the four new articles were presented to our legislative bodies and the Board of Supervisors gave their approval on the project direction and the articles presented so far. The four articles are available on our Engage website. As a recap, the four articles we drafted in this phase were Article One, general provisions, containing the same establishment of authority as is in our current ordinance as Article One and probably every municipality's Article One. Article Two, which establishes the authority of each individual body involved in administering the ordinance. That includes the Planning Commission, the zoning administrator, the architectural review board, all of those. Article Three outlines all the applications, the permits that someone could apply for and describes the processes for each of those applications. And Article 10, which describes non-conformities, which is fairly boilerplate, did not contain any substantive content change. And again, is probably similar to the language in every ordinance across the Commonwealth. But all of these sections with the changes that we made and the reorganization that we made, all of them follow the same basic structure. This provides a really great logical consistency and it starts with the intent or purpose of the section, ends up with modifications or waivers or very specific nitpicky things for each individual topic. As needed, different sections may have additional regulations added, subsets of sections, but the overall regulatory architecture does remain consistent. Kind of as an early bird special, we have applied this ordinance architecture to the proposed revisions for the RIT and Form Base Code. I believe that'll be presented to the commission in January. Our zoning modernization team had a very strong overlap with the RIT and Form Base Code. I was on that team. So the ordinance we've been writing follows the same tone, language style and the ordinance structure that we outlined previously. Here I have condensed sections from the draft article from Phase One and the draft Form Base Code to highlight the similarities. The numbering scheme is different, but the Form Base Code is following our existing numbering format. And then when we change into the new overall format, the numbers will just be changed without any really big changes to the Form Base Code itself. So Phase One is complete. Phase Two seems like the obvious next step. Phase Two is the phase where we're focusing on format modernization. We're calling this phase format modernization because it focuses on the format and less so the content, although it is a language, format, and a little bit of content. So looking back at our project goals, this phase completes the work we started in Phase One, working to rewrite the ordinance for clarity and ease of use. At the end of this phase, Phase Two, we're anticipating adoption of a fully rewritten ordinance that will include overall clearer language, a more logical and navigable format, and simpler administrative processes. However, this phase does not include the majority of the substantive regulatory changes. Those changes will be rolled into Phase Three and we'll explain why a little bit later in this presentation. This phase does include rewriting and reorganizing the ordinance for clarity and ease of use. One of the examples of this is reorganizing all of our lists of uses across districts into tables that span multiple districts and are easier to peruse. Staff have been working on these tables for the past two, three months or so. And I do want to mention that the example on the screen is for format review only. It is not completed at all. But what this new format illustrates is an easier-to-read view of what is on the page. It has an increased clarity of whether a use is by right through administrative review, special use permit requiring board approval, or whether the use is only permitted as accessory use to another use or whether it's just not permitted at all in that district. It also includes cleaner, consistent naming of uses across the districts. Additionally, at the same time, we have been reorganizing and rewriting language that exists in the current ordinance, again for clarity and ease of use. Here, examples of supplemental regulations, which is being reorganized into performance use standards and grouped to make it simpler to access. Performance use standards for residential uses, for example, will be under Division 7.3, whereas all of the recreational use standards will be grouped under Division 7.4. While we're reorganizing the sections, we are rewriting the language for clarity and brevity where possible without substantially changing the regulations themselves. So here's kind of an example. A paragraph of text under the current language example becomes a list of steps, which is much clearer and easier to follow. These kinds of updates will be applied to the entire ordinance and that is intended to be adopted at the culmination of Phase Two of this project, providing a fresh slate for the ordinance before we adopt any substantive changes. Additionally, Phase Two will likely include some smaller regulatory changes. This slide highlights a few of the types that we're considering rolling into this phase. Types of changes that are just codifications of regular practice, a very, very straightforward adoption of industry standard regulations, which in and of themselves are actually generally codification of regular practice. But as cute as the dog may be, these kinds of changes are not finalized in our plan. They will be discussed more in detail in a later work session. So finally, we move to Phase Three of the zoning modernization project, which is the big stuff. We're calling this the regulatory modernization phase. This phase pulls in the other two goals that we listed at the beginning, aligning the zoning ordinance with AC44 and updating regulations for modern best practices. So the newly adopted AC44 comprehensive plan is a weighty and important document. Staff did engage the public extensively throughout this process and the culmination of that work included numerous actions and goals for the community as a whole, spanning every department across the county government. However, one of the direct ways to implement comp plan is of course through zoning ordinance. The zoning modernization team is working closely with the AC44 team as we determine how these goals and actions will be implemented and which priorities will take priority in the zoning modernization project. One of the big moves listed in the implementation chapter of the comp plan is to align regulations to AC44, which might be described as the larger umbrella of this whole project. So that's not listed on this slide. But a few examples of specific changes that might be prioritized in this project are increasing permissions for missing middle housing across different residential densities, allowing mixed-use districts in previously commercial-only districts, allowing additional rural area conducive businesses to operate with administrative approval and performance standards instead of requiring board approval across the board. Bigger, larger kind of changes like that. So as we mentioned, zoning staff is working closely with AC44 staff to winnow down the dozens, I think 50-some-odd AC44 zoning ordinance recommended actions into a priority list that they're working with short, medium, and long-term actions. That prioritization list will be presented for approval by the Board of Supervisors, at which point zoning modernization will implement those changes in Phase Three. At the same time, I do know that the AC44 team is working on other initiatives to address all the other comprehensive. uh to address all the other comprehensive plan goals and actions that are not within the zoning modernization project. And we are working very closely with those staff, um, spending far too much time together, um, making sure our initiatives mesh well and that we are working concurrently and not at cross purposes. Um, we currently have a target date of early spring twenty twenty-six um to receive approval on those implementation plans and start moving forward with the regulatory changes. So finally, uh, Phase Three will also incorporate a number of initiatives that staff, developers, and commission members have all been talking about for years, including updating parking regulations for best practices, um, simplifying or sign regulations, codifying minimum sizes and standards for tree wells and landscaping, among many other types of planning best practices. Um, these types of changes will largely be informed by the best planning practices across Virginia and the planning field in general. So how is this going to all happen and when? Um, as the commission may notice, there are handouts provided, also available on the sideboard for the public and which will be available as part of this presentation on our Engage site. Um, the project has two phases that are currently already running and are running concurrently. Um, the project format phase, uh, where we're working on just rewriting without substantive changes will run through adoption, um, aiming for fall of twenty twenty-six for that adoption. However, while we are working on rewriting that, we're naturally questioning the regulations we're rewriting, um, reviewing it for changes, and then filing them for more in-depth work as progress progresses through Phase Three, the regulation modernization phase. Uh, as an example, um, looking back at that uses table we had on the screen a while ago, we're reviewing the uses lists and reformatting them into our preferred table layout and rewriting the language associated with that use into clearer language. But uh, as we are um drafting the newly formatted entire ordinance, we intend those use tables to be adopted in fall twenty twenty-six. Um, and then while we are looking at that, um, we are noting which changes need regulatory changes. Um, so that's how we're kind of working at the same le- the same time um on the two different phases. We are going to be um moving forward with beginning staff-level review of those phases. And then once we receive direction on prioritization, then the staff-level review will guide the work with topic-based focus groups, which will lead to our newly drafted substantive changes to the ordinance. Um, our current goal for regulatory changes will be incorporated into the clean-formatted ordinance is around early twenty twenty-eight. Um, this approach of the staggered milestones provides a faster delivery of the new ordinance, providing overall clarity and user-friendliness at a um more convenient speed for people who want to start doing projects quickly, um, while allowing us necessary time for research and engagement on topics that do require more in-depth discussions and more engagement. So um, every zoning textbook that I have worked on, and there have been a few, um, have involved an iterative process. So by building that iteration into our project timeline, we're allowing a continuous progress, uh, and we're also allowing for project learning throughout that iteration. But bec- before we, because we're expecting that, that creates efficiency in our use of staff time and hopefully our legislative body time as well. So we will be working on a broad public information sharing uh engagement strategy with uh general information in Albemarle County News, social media, and both the general county website and our Engage site, which I've mentioned a couple of times here, um, and the link of which I will share on the last slide. So throughout this process, we will keep the general public informed on progress. But we are emphasizing understanding the hows and whys of rewriting the zoning ordinance and how that is applied. Um, one of the things we're looking for is a lunch and learn series. Um, the name is still up in the air. Maybe zoning university, maybe ordinance oracles TBD, um, any suggestions? We will take those. Um, but following the robust general public engagement of the comp plan, which provided us with county-level broad goals, the zoning modernization project is focusing on targeted engagement, uh, working with topic experts to write the ordinance, um, to to inform staff as we write the ordinance as outlined in the broad goals of the comp plan. So we are working closely with our communications and public engagement team as well uh to work on building those topic focus groups. And of course, they are helping us throughout this progress, this process with um our engagement efforts across the board. Uh, we will, of course, also um have numerous legislative work sessions to tackle questions and receive feedback throughout. So at a sixty-foot-high birds-eye view, since that's currently the permitted maximum building height in most of our districts, our project next steps are as follows. Um, staff will be continuing to work on permitted uses tables, uh, general formatting and language rewrites, and the overall reorganization of the ordinance. Our project engagement and education will be ongoing throughout. And we'll be working to determine which of the AC forty-four regulatory changes and best planning practices will be encompassed in this project with a uh target timeline of figuring that out around February or March of twenty twenty-six. Uh, we will be working on topic-based discussions and legislative topic review throughout the project, starting probably spring or summer of twenty twenty-six. And um, just to get it on everybody's books, uh, we are looking at an update similar to this one in about a year in November twenty twenty-six. Um, we will have other meetings in the interim, but just mark your calendars. So it's a new and challenging uh and intimidating road ahead of us. But as we move forward, I am very excited to bring forward what I believe will be an amazing new ordinance and a great step for the county. So with that, um, I would love to address all of the questions you have been so patiently waiting to ask.
Great, great presentation. Thank you. That that was a really helpful to have the expanded upon outline through this presentation. I learned a lot, so that was really, really good. Thank you. Any um, who wants to kick us off or we just do this informally? We can just.
Yeah.
Got some housekeeping questions.
Mr. Murray, go for it.
Oh, sure. Okay, so um, the first thing is, um, I brought this in before, and um, is it it calls out streamlined administrative processes. And and I'm wondering how are we going to work to, because sometimes um, sometimes in streamlining things, we can, we can actually um miss important things that are important to the community, regulations that um, you know, that that might actually be important to people. You know, particularly, I'm thinking about environmental regulations as we, in in the interest of streamlining, we may actually inadvertently create loopholes that actually create environmental situations. So um, as we're um looking at streamlining, how how are we, how are we um achieving that balance, first of all? And then um, and how are we getting the right stakeholders at the table to make sure that both sides of those kinds of issues are represented?
Sure, great question. Um, so the 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 streamlining that we're talking about has mostly already been incorporated into the ordinance drafts, um, and it's really very administrative. It is um uh calling different types of ord- of uh applications the same application type as opposed to having fifteen different application forms for that. Um, and that our our um civic access and uh EPNL project that we are still working out right now, um, but which is implemented and is available to the public now, um, and is part of our regular process, that was definitely a big part of that streamlining. Um, if you uh review our draft Article Three, uh, I think the really big streamline that we had that our development community um was very, very excited about was to condense all of our site plan processes, um, so that there is a generalized site plan um that is skipping over the initial for simpler processes. Where there's going to be um intensive grading or where there's uh architectural review board, the initial is still required. Um, but in an, in every other circumstance where it's a more straightforward thing, the same reviews happen under the uh the final or the the singular site plan review. Um, but it doesn't require two applications and two review processes. So that's really just cutting that in half for a lot of our applications. And I know that our development community was excited about that, and staff said that would save them a lot of time without missing anything. So that that's really kind of what we're, what we're looking at as far as the administrative processes.
Great, that's great. Thank you for that clarification. Um. Then there were some some tantalizing hints as you went through there on on page ten, for example. It it looked to me like there's some suggestion that we might um actually differentiate um rural and urban uses as we go through this. Um, i- is is that a true statement that we'll be going further and perhaps breaking out some of the rural uses that are not broken out now?
Um, you're saying on page ten?
I think it was page ten.
Uh, the draft uses table?
Uh huh, yes.
Um, I mean, so so currently what we have is just lists of uses, and there are in um, in in a lot of cases, the same uses listed in the rural area and the residential districts, um, because they are treated the same across everything, for example, single-family homes. Um, they're they're treated the same in in all the different districts. Um, the RA list here is really just what we have in that list right now put into table format.
So, I mean, I mean, I would encourage if there are opportunities, for example, of of breaking out. Um, and I think if we go back to. Oh, yeah, so um, you have agricultural processing plants, for example. Um, i- is is that, is that a current classification that we have?
It is. Um, it's called fruit and uh produce um packing plants, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. I think anytime we can, we can break things out, I mean, one of the things I I've always called out is, you know, we have areas that are zoned industrial and in our rural area that probably should be classified as something else. Um, and I would encourage if there's the opportunity to look at that and maybe coming up with a more um, more clear classification of some of those those properties that that does say that this is not a a potential site for a data center or a chemical manufacturing plant, that 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 would be a positive thing.
Um, I don't know the timing of it. I do know that um one of the priorities for the long-range planning team is working on a rural area plan, and I think that would be encompassed under that. Um, I I do know that parts of that are going to bleed into the zoning modernization project. But um, I I definitely think that that is going to be something that we will be talking about a lot in the rural rural plan.
Uh, that's, that's great. That's another question that I had, so. That's all I have for now. Awesome. Weber?
Uh, had a question around community engagement, and if you could share a little bit about your goals, like the quantity of folks you're trying to reach, as I remember, you know, as we worked with AC forty-four staff did a a monumental effort at trying to get out there and and touch people and and solicit input. But I think when you look at the numbers, they probably fell short of what we probably hoped to is my guess in terms of how many people were able to bring to the table, like unique people. Um, any thought around goals for this and any lessons learned that we learned from AC forty-four that we can implement for outreach efforts here?
So I think one of the big differences um is in the application of the the target of this project, um, because AC forty-four really was a very broad target. Um, and that you really wanted to get every voice in the community because it is the comprehensive plan. It's, it is comprehensive across the board. Um, the topics that we're working with on this project are really focused. So um, I don't uh, I don't think that we necessarily need to do a two-thousand-person survey on what size tree wells are best for plants in our uh streetscapes. I I I don't think that'll be an effective use of our time. Um, so that's, that's kind of really what we're looking for with our engagement here is uh expert-level topic-focused groups. We will be sharing information, um, and I think that we can definitely look for uh, look for numbers of reaching on information sharing. And I do think that we can work with our CAPE team to figure out um, how to best implement those lessons there.
Right, sounds good.
Good evening. I'll let you write that note.
Appreciate it.
There. So a couple of questions. So on the document that you s- came with the package that has, it's a ZTA twenty twenty-two zoning modification eighteen November, and thank you for writing the that that the um the date like that. I understand that a lot easier. Eight day, month, year. Um, on item six, you have the the Rialt twenty-nine form-based code integration. One of my questions is, will we ever have, d- do you anticipate having other form-based codes? Or that we might develop other form-based codes? And this is moving, I see Mr. Barnes.
Yes, absolutely. That that is Michael Barnes's favorite topic, and I'm going to let him address that.
Yeah, let him answer that for us.
Well, I don't know if I would use favorite in front of that, but it's certainly something we're very interested in. Um, I guess we're working on the form-based code. We're trying to make it something that can be replicable. Now, will it be replicable? That's a decision we'll have to make, but we've intentionally tried to make it as replicable as we can to other similar regional, you know, the primary activity centers and maybe the secondary, the the community ones as well, so.
And and also encouraging is not, I mean, there's no use going through the exercise if if at the end it's not sending or not sort of encouraging people to use the code. You know, that's the piece that I wrestled with when we did the twenty-nine code. It's like, oh, that's really cool, but it ain't going to happen. And, you know, just living and walking in a space as you're reaching out and doing that, I think would just to encourage you to to sort of not go through the exercise, not that I'd want you to, to go through the exercise, just to go through the exercise, but actually to go through the exercise with the hope of creating a new, an uh with a, with an impact or an encouragement on what you'd expect to happen there. Because this is like, this is a form of overlay. And so, you know, one of our supervisors always talked about an arts overlay in the Jew- in the Jewett district. And so how would we accomplish that? So we can, we can do the language, but what are the sort of the incentives there to get someone to sort of say, yeah, I think that's something to do, particularly since the city has decided it's going to be, it's re- it's reinvigorating its arts-in-place thing. I don't want to be outdone by them in the future. So so, but I appreciate, I just, I'm glad you're going to do it, but I would just say, let's be thoughtful down the road about what we're trying to encourage in that location as opposed to the exercise, the form-based exercise, which was a wonderful exercise, but it's probably a decade or two before it's fulfilled. Or at least somebody's going to die and sell that piece of property before it's fulfilled. And so that, that's really what I'm talking about. How do we get, how do we move farther than that? The other piece I have, I think you answered it when you, when you were talking to 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 my colleague here about experts. So the topic experts will be both inside and outsiders, insiders and outsiders? And so if you could just sort of open that up a little bit more, please?
Um, so that is something that we are going to be working with the communications team on. Um, I think that they're going to be really providing us a lot of expert advice on how to, how to group those people and find the the range of voices that we really want.
To provide feedback, to provide feedback and to provide insight. Yeah, I I mean, however you do that, but that you have a list of individuals who have subject matter, who are subject matter experts. Some of them are inside the county and some of them are outside the county.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's really where I'm coming from. Communication, that'll work. Yeah, that's really where I was coming from.
Um, yeah, I think that we, we do have a fantastic breadth of knowledge on our staff. Um, but we will also be looking um outside of county staff for for that information as well.
And then my last, which is always the thing that you can count on, if I see it on the screen. There was one of the, one of your issues there, I said, it thought, it said the Monticello Historic District.
Got it.
Which we do not have one, as you know. We have a southern rural historic district. But the, and we have this thing that Monticello likes to say that they've got a a view shared protection, which they even admit in their, in their online that it is not a county-designated anything. So this is just Julian, you'll only have to put up with this for a little bit more. Julian would just like us to be disciplined when we talk about that place on the hill. The place on the hill that has three hundred million dollars worth of nonprofit income every year. And because it's a tax-free environment, it pays no taxes to the county of Albemarle except for tourist tax on bad food, and maybe if you buy some trinkets. Remember what I say? Don't give away our power. Our power is we get to create the development and the environment that we want our people to live in, not a guy who's been dead for a number of years and whose piece of property has a colorful history. I just put it that way. So I would just ask you before you go to supervisors, before I have to whisper into somebody's supervisor. So I would just ask you before you go to supervisors, before I have to whisper into somebody's supervisor here, just say that it's the Southern, just the Southern Albemarle Historic District and exercise Monticello, except if you want to say the pretend Monticello view, view shared protection. Thank you, madam, for allowing me yet again. And I, and I know, you know, you, you know, you know, there's going to be comments, but not from you all, but you know.
Luis?
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it. The presentation and a lot of the detail that you provided. So just a little bit, just going up thousand, thousand footer here a little bit, but.
65.
55?
65.
65?
Yeah, that's the maximum height density for most of our districts.
Okay. I want to take it up a little higher. Which I think is very consistent with my comment right now. So you heard us talking about density over and over again in AC44. The importance of not leaving density on the table as we have the last 10 years. So my question is, how are we, what are, how are we thinking about that in this process? Because this is the opportunity to put some teeth into that. To actually think about, how do we avoid not leaving a lot of density on the table? So how do we encourage density, adaptive reuse, infill? And I, and yeah, thank you. So you, so some of these key words are in here, right? I see density under housing. I don't see it anywhere else. I think there's infill some, some, somewhere in here. I saw it. And those are great that it's, those terms are getting in there, but how are we thinking about actually putting some teeth behind that? So that we don't lose those opportunities. Because if we don't densify, I think you, somewhere you say, you know, up, not out. But how do we achieve that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really the focus of what we are going to be working on in phase three. That, that's really the big question is how do we make those goals actual reality? And I think that we're going to have to start talking about that in concrete steps as opposed to in visionary steps and in goals and how do we reach those goals? So that's, that's really what we're going to be looking at. And I, I do anticipate that that is going to be one of the primary goals that it comes out of our work in the spring is density. I think that we've all been hearing that word over and over and over again. And it makes absolute sense and it is actually best planning practice as well. So that is definitely going to be something that we are going to be figuring out at that stage. Kind of looking at that, uh, looking at that timeline. Let me go back to there. So this is really where we're going to be focusing that on between the, um, the like early 2026 to late 2026, when we have those conversations, that's going to be the ideas and conversations stage.
Regulatory changes. Yeah. Just a few things to consider there. So, so this is, so I think the teeth can come and you've heard us talking about these, these gates of how you open density, how you open. So there's, there's got to be incentives. I also think that we need to, to incorporate and think about partners. So how does the county partner with developers? How to other entities, private, we're, we're, we're now in an opportunity where Albemarle County in particular is now going to be home to some major companies. How those companies can partner with us to open up some of these gates for higher development. Higher density infill projects and so forth, adaptive reuse. So thinking about these partners and we're, we have more partners at the table now. And we will be in the next few years. So by the time we've been looking at, you know, when this is adopted, we're going to have a major neighbor to the north of the county or in, in the north part of the county. So I would encourage us to really think strategically on these partnerships and how they can help us develop the infrastructure that we need and, and of course achieve the density that we want to achieve in the next, throughout the AC44 span.
Great, thank you.
I would just say, Luis, to add on to that, I mean, part of the zoning ordinance is going to get to that. I mean, you can create incentives for density. You can keep regulations that allow that. But I think you're talking about regulations. I mean, you're talking about incentives that are partnerships or maybe even things that help incentivize some of the things that allow you to get the density, right? I mean, you're talking about parking decks or other infrastructure that might help support that.
The things that always come up, which are what? Schools, transportation, so road improvements, so.
Public infrastructure.
Public infrastructure. So those are the things that ultimately are limiting our development in certain areas, right? I mean, they always come up over and over and over again. How do we bring partners to the table so that we can get ahead of the development? Have the infrastructure. So all of a sudden, hey, we can build a 12 story building somewhere or we, you know, and, and then that's possible. Otherwise we just, we wind up with the same issues. How do we get people from point A to from B? And so that's where I think the partnerships could begin to come in. And if we incentivize, well, we could build more density in a particular site. However, there's certain things that we need in place before we achieve that density.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything you said and I, you know, zoning ordinances themselves on that narrow thing. You can all, you can create the regulations that allow for that. But I think your point is you can do that all day long, but how do you actually do another, several other actions to the community that buttress that so that you actually achieve it? So I mean, it's kind of a part of the zoning ordinance. I guess I'm trying to articulate and partly, you know, other aspects we have to really pull together.
Right. In the zoning ordinance, we can begin to provide the incentives, say, well, we can achieve more density in a particular area. However, there's, there.
They have the infrastructure.
Correct.
Yep.
And that's where, yes, I understand that that is outside of the zoning ordinance. But that is where our economic development and our partnerships all come into play, right? They, they, they shouldn't be siloed into individual. They should actually all be working towards the same goal.
I hear you and agree with you.
Did I just echo that as well? I think, you know, one of the things I noticed when I first came on this commission was how frequently we're kind of just reactive to, you know, the proposal coming our way. And the chance to actually be proactive and, and prepare for like, oh, here's where we would like to grow things. Here's where we would like to, you know, really make things happen that, that we know we all need. Let's select where those things might be. But I wanted to actually back up to a couple of just kind of fun things first. I was curious on the promotion, ACN, Alamo County News. Is that just the name of the newsletter?
Uh, yeah, that's the general newsletter, um, straight from CAPE. So I did not make that up.
I was hoping there was some new news outlet that I hadn't heard of yet. As far as the name of the lunch series, I might suggest Zone Out or Comfort Zone. But those are just corny puns. Take them for what you will. I, I liked very much, and I just wanted to compliment the, the format work, the sort of sample you showed instead of this block paragraph of text. It's like, oh, this is an outline that my human brain can understand. And so I just keep up the good work on that, that front. But then, uh, talking about the sort of regulatory phase and phase three. I, I was curious about sort of more, I'd like to hear more information about when this commission kind of gets to see some of what's happening and, and, and see some of the priorities. What, just one of the things that I noticed was that like on the housing section, it's like more missing middle. And, but at the same time, I remember in the, in the conference of plan discussions, there really was no color coding all around the vast swaths of land around 29 North that was that, that color. And so I'm kind of curious, is that kind of thing makes me want to sort of have some input somewhere along the way relatively, you know, soon, not, not like to get my fingers in the staff pie, but just to make sure that, that, you know, we can sort of be a part of that along the way.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, as just a point of information, because I am obviously a planning and zoning nerd. The missing middle would be incorporated into multiple districts. So that's, that's really, it would be, it would be pulled into a lot of our residential and our mixed use districts that we're looking at. And it would really be, it, it's more of a identification of a type that we have not encouraged through our ordinance as opposed to an, a distinct kind of district. But that's just a side note. As far as, uh, when the planning commission would be involved, we were just today talking about doing a kind of information work session on both bringing in the information from prioritization and then also talking about the additional plans. So, so both, both Michael's team and then also our team coming back to the planning commission again around that like March date of next year. And then I really think it's just going to be rolling on as we approach the topics, we're going to be, we're going to be bringing individual things back. The, uh, the work sessions are definitely going to be more focused on broader conversations, whereas I know previously when we have brought zoning text amendments to the commission, some of them have been very focused on individual words on the page. And I think we're really going to be, be looking at the, the, the higher level kind of aspects of that.
Very good, very good. This is a, a, a little left field question, but I'm curious, especially in some of the urban ring districts right by the city of Charlottesville, if there's any appetite for, for coordinating or, or, or like aligning anything with what the city has done in those parts of, of their, their land.
A great question. Yeah, I guess the, the whole thing is along that frontier where we may have an activity center, say in Pantops, Lower Pantops. And the city is working on River Road. And Little High Street.
Yeah.
A little, a little High Street. How did those relate each other? Hydraulics, another interesting area, even gasoline alley and some of the things that the city's talked about in Green Bar neighborhood. There, there's several places around the, the frontier to the two jurisdictions beat.
Well, I think there's also.
Okay. And so and I, I love you guys are always pushing me to get the right answer right next. Really, it's a and I beg a little bit of time. We, our staff like really spent all this time writing. AC44 staff spent all that time managing two sets of presentations. We're doing a planning commission to board, doing lunch and learns, everything. Doing all the graphic layout.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, you know, kudos to that team. But time for that team to sort of sit there and say, okay, so now how does that actually, those great ideas, how do we implement that AC44? How do we get into that question of all those activity centers around that we've identified that are those areas I think we just hit? What does it mean to do an activity center plan? What's our outcome? What are the desired things? And coming back and explaining that, talking about how we support that transportation. And then that whole host of other things that Luis was sort of, that's why I kind of called that out. I was, I've been thinking a lot about how does that work with all of the other, either departments or other places where the county has the capacity to push levers one way or another to help promote that thing, stuff beyond transportation. And so, yeah, it's a, it's something that, um, if that's the organizing principle that, that we move forward through my, you know, senior staff and comes to the board. I think that's the idea. It's like, we have to figure out where are we going to make these walkable centers? And how are we going to incentivize them to actually make them happen? And what investments are we going to make? What catalyst projects can we find to, to, to make those things happen? And we may find that we do it everywhere, all the centers at once. We may find that we try and get some successes and some momentum first.
I appreciate the, uh, the and answer. The, well, I just had one, one other little thing and then that means pass on to the rest of everybody. I, I was just looking at, at, and thinking about this in terms that, that that I understand better and, and density I understand is more homes and, and fewer acres. You know, the economic development, sort of flexibility for multiple economic development types. I want us to think though about, and to kind of bear this lens in mind, is that the way we, we do this zoning that serves people, because it's not just density, what I want is affordability. And, and it's not just sort of like flexible economics. I want jobs with dignity. And so that's the kind of lens that I want to bring to it and, and make sure that we kind of like keep infusing i- in addition to the jargon that we like to use.
And of course also arts and parks.
I, I, yes.
Wanted to add one, one comment. When you said beyond, so beyond infrastructure, I think that that sparked another, another thought that I didn't articulate. Which I think goes, goes, goes straight to, to this, this question of, of zoning modification. The, the limiting factor that we always hear in terms of density, right? Well, we can't go up another few floors or whatever, because you, you're changing construction methodologies. You're, you, you, you may be going away from, from wood or so, so there's some code implications, right? As you, as you go up more elevators. I mean, there's a number of things, right? That architecturally you, you need, right? Your structure changes and so forth. Podium parking, right? And so there's, there's all of these. What we hear, what we've heard is that we can't do that because of the cost implications, right? The same thing with infill projects. In some cases, infill projects could cost you more money, uh, depending on what you're doing and how you're approaching them, adaptive reuse and so forth. And this is where again, this partnerships, so let's not limit ourselves in thinking of how we can partner with, with industry that we have and more that are, that is coming. University and others to think about workforce, workforce housing, which they're going to need as well as low income housing. So how can they help fund some of these gaps on projects? Right? When, when you have a, an international pharmaceutical that's going to build their largest manufacturing plant in the world here in Albemarle County, there should be a conversation of where all these people are going to live. And they're going to use schools and they're going to, you know, use our roads. And so there should be a conversation there, right? And UVA as well. I think there's opportunities for UVA to partner even beyond what they're, you know, doing right now with, with, uh, some workforce housing and affordable housing that, that they obviously have been looking at and, and implementing some of that. But there's more that we can talk about and implement as for the zoning, and this is where these gates come in, right? Well, we could do more. You know, you could go higher. How can we incentivize this? And if from an economic development piece, if there's pots of money from partners for workforce housing or affordable housing. I think this is how we can potentially get there, but we gotta, you know, people's got to be singing from the same sheet of music and, and getting, getting our resources and all these levers, as you said, that we can pull aligned. So I'll, I'll just, you know, leave it there. I just wanted to put that example out there. It's not just schools, obviously they can partner in schools and roads, but in actual buildings. How do we get more density? How do we not leave the density on the table? Well, what if we had a pot of money that can incentivize, subsidize to say, okay, well, what if the county can do this? Can you get to that other density? And maybe along with that is there's additional affordable housing component. So anyway, wanted got to think beyond the box here, because we're really not moving the needle with either. We're not moving the needle with affordability. We're not moving the needle with affordable housing. As much as we like to talk about it, it's not moving the needle. It's going the opposite direction. And it will, because these are high paying jobs that are coming in.
Weber? Oh, question?
Sure. I, I do want to confirm that, uh, staff will be looking at overlay districts through this exercise. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the overlay districts that we have are currently outlined in the ordinance. That would be something that we would also. We have talked about making overlay districts as part of our activity center initiative. I don't know whether that would fall under this, uh, this project, just because of the timeline and the phasing on that and the immense staff time that would be needed on that. And I think that that would be something that would really be a project we would look at on its own, because it is such a big thing. I know that it's going to be really important for overall bringing the comp plan to life. I don't know if that's necessarily going to be something that we're going to incorporate into this, into this, uh, particular timeline.
It, it might be one of those things that, you know, execs within the county staff and our elected officials maybe want to think about and whether that, how that gets. Think about and whether that, how that gets prioritized and is thinking, you know. Is there technology overlay centers for, for data centers or? What happened to solar? Is that something where you wanna try to control a little bit of where these things start to happen, right? Um, wildfires, we had talked about that a few times, right? Is, what does that start to mean with resiliency and natural disasters? It's not gonna slow down, so. Um, it might be something that's worth just thinking about, right? Does that shift priorities?
Mm hmm.
As you go through this exercise and um, as I've been reflecting on your schedule a little bit more, I'm also curious around, it looks like, you know, spring of twenty-eight is the adoption of regulations. I know by law we have to update the comp plan every five years, and so there'll be a point in time that feels like it's starting to get warm. Where we're starting to go through the comp plan exercise again. So I'm wondering, like, how does that start to play together? I'm sure you all have probably talked about that, but I was just wondering if you could share how, how do you see that schedule starting to impact or maybe not impact? The next comp plan revision, which starts to feel like it's starting up about that time.
So um, and trying not to speak out of turn because the comp plan is not my purview, but um, the comp plan we just adopted. Is AC forty-four because the larger comp plan should be leading us for the next twenty years, up till twenty twenty, twenty forty-four. Um, I do think that we're gonna be doing um the smaller changes, I think, like the, the rural area plan, the small area plans that we've talked about. And definitely the activity centers. I think that is probably gonna come into a bunch of different plans. Um, the uh. That's really the, the five-year kind of turnover is the review of the comp plan and then making changes where necessary. Um, but I think that. All of the teams are working really closely together. Um, we are kind of bringing in. Um, these, these conversation points to every meeting that we have and figuring out what it's gonna look like on the horizon.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, sure.
So, so there's a couple of thi- things here that I'm hearing that I think would be helpful for this group and the electives to get together. The whole idea about how do, how will the county align both opportunities and necessities? Um, I am not of the opinion, two things. I am less than enthusiastic about aligning with the city. Now, you know, I'm saying that on my way. One, because I don't think that our, I don't think the two jurisdictions have common goals about things. And until that work is done, I think it would be, it would not yield the kinds of benefits that I believe people would hope. I do think though that the um, the centers can in fact be the launch pad for the form-based codes. And so if there was a nexus between things, I would think that would be something that, that would be helpful for the planning commission, helpful for the community and helpful for staff. The other piece I think in this, you know, the, the fad right now are ICBA, so I'm gonna sort of use that as an analogy. I think we read recently that the Commonwealth is probably going to be very slow in putting any kind of transportation dollars into our community. So basically what I think Luis is speaking about here is how do you engage in a public-private partnership around those kinds of dollars? Those tend to be really big dollars, and some of the people who are coming here are really big dollar kind of people who could do that. So I think really what we're talking about is when we're looking at those locations that we're attracting people. What to sort of the web of opportunities look like from those opportun- from those, from those locations? Twenty-nine North is the place that's probably got the most sort of ability right now unless we start moving down twenty-two, twenty-nine South, because I don't see where. You know, I struggle with, what are you gonna do with the bridge across the Ravanna going to Pantops? That's a really significant rewiring of that, of that transportation node. To make that more effective. And it can be done, but it's gotta be done with a price tag that I think is beyond what the county is willing to push towards those types of projects. Because one of the other things that I think, as you're thinking this through and why I would encourage um the planning commission to have some, it's a shame that. And I know this is offensive to what I'm about to say. It's a shame that there aren't opportunities for the planning commission and the supervisors to just have conversations among themselves. But everything has to have a sunlight on it, which will then prevent people from having what I would say honest conversations about what are our possibilities? It's like if you could do like the Board of Visitors does, say, we're going into, we're going into sort of a private session for this particular period now, then we'll report afterwards. Because I think some of the issues that you're talking about, some of the issues that you're, that you're trying to, trying to sort of wrestle with. Are issues that are going to be hard to have discussions with in a public session. You know, when you sit, look at your neighbors, your neighbors are saying, I'm already paying too much in taxes. I don't want to pay anymore in taxes. I don't care how good the school system, how good the roads are. Maybe there'll be a bit of relief. If the new administration in Richmond allows us to have that, that referendum on, on sales taxes, whether or not that could be a way to fund, to fund um. Uh, the rehabilitation, the building of schools. That, that would be helpful. That would be twenty million dollars that could come quickly to re divert it to someplace. But at the instant, at the moment now, when sixty percent of the county's budget is going to education. There's not a lot of fluff there to do the kinds of big ideas. So basically you're starting to say, how do we do the big ideas? And then how do we generate the income to be able to bring those ideas to fruition? That's, I think, really at the essence, what you're talking about. And you've heard over the years, I've, I've said, and I appreciate, I mean, I've run, says things like that. When a business tells you it's too expensive, that doesn't work for their balance sheet, this group never gets to determine whether or not that's an accurate statement. We don't know. I'm gonna take it at your word, because you didn't, you signed that little thing on the blue book saying, I won't lie and I won't offer anybody help. But this group never gets to see whether or not when a, when a, when a person says, I can't do this. Because it runs against my, my return on investment. And so being able to sort of craft ways in which. The return on investment or the alleged return on investment doesn't become a governor on the things that we want for our community. It's something I think is a joint conversation between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission and staff, obviously. I mean, I'm not trying to leave staff out of there. Because you really are going to have to figure out a way, ways of breaking the, the paradigm. And shaping the opinions that are so resistant to either change or paying more in their property taxes. People don't want to do that. I mean, that's the big piece with, you'll find out next year, you're gonna get hit with that threat. People don't want their taxes to go up.
Right.
And they don't care how, they don't care what's missing. They don't want their taxes to go up. And so figuring out how to change that narrative. Is something that I think the planning commission needs to be part of, if and in fact, we're gonna live into some of these new changes, I think are robust changes. And I also think are necessary for us to be, for us to, to try and recapture some of the um, the economic wholeness of our community. And so that's my five second ICBA.
So I'll throw out a few things. I don't, I'm not saying these things to summarize or to conclude our conversation, but just throw out some thoughts. One. First of all, thank you. As I mentioned at the beginning, this was really helpful, um, especially the timelines to understand things. Um. I'm gonna ask for a height variance, I think. We were at sixty-five, right? You were, you were at sixty-five. I think we're gonna go a little higher even to that. And I, I hesitated to bring this up because I didn't want to get too much off track. I think this is the, the zoning modernization is the topic for tonight. I do want to highlight though, because I've had people ask me this question, right? Now you've built the car. And you're gonna throw gas in it, you're gonna drive this thing down the road, right? What? And, and you know, there are seven sections, right? And the last section is implementation and that second word, which is accountability. So as we think through this, as I look through each of the seven sections, every one of those seven sections has some aspect that touches zoning modernization. It's all intertwined, it's interwoven into it. You mentioned a couple. One of them you mentioned was the rural areas plan. Um, you mentioned the small area plans, you mentioned the centers, et cetera. Those things are also coming along. One of the things that I, I feel like I've either missed or. It was, was either, I don't mean as critically, but intentionally skipped for all the right reasons, but. Was this broader view of how do we achieve everything that we've outlined in terms of initiatives in our AC forty-four plan? And how do we prioritize that? And how do we achieve them? What's the timeline and resource allocation to do so? And does that exist? What, what's the plan? And again, maybe that is a little bit. Too far out of the realm of tonight's discussion, so we don't have to dwell on it for a long time, but this Florida can help me, hopefully. Good to see you.
Thank you, Commissioners Jody Filardo, Community Development Director. Thank you for the question. Um, staff and the county executive's office are hard at work. Figuring out how to weave together. The third, the chapters full of action steps.
Yeah.
And to put those into some sort of reasonable buckets, if you will. Once um staff has taken, is taking a stab at that right now. And the plan is to then take that to the county exec's office where they will vet that across the entire county to see how all of those. Particular actions are going to impact each of these di- different departments in the county. Once the county execs feel like we've got a solid way forward, um, they are gonna bring that to the board. Um, for uh, an adoption of priorities, but we're, we're probably, well, we're several months away from that coming forward. Cause it's gonna take us a while. We have hundreds of action steps in the.
Yeah.
Forty-four. And some of them are coming forward as things that have to be short term. Because they, they must precede other things later on.
Sure.
Um, some of the things are coming forward because they are uh zoning mod kinds of things. So as we're tackling zoning mod, we want to make sure we tackle those as well. So staff is actively hard at work knitting all that together to then go to county execs, then come to the board for their blessing of the priorities. So uh Chair Missel, you will get to see that surely.
So um, can I ask a couple of questions? One is, you said that uh the county exec would vet with the county.
County departments.
With department, so.
Inside.
It's internal.
Inside the county.
And, and I get the logistics of that, sort of the mechanics of it, right? Like all the things you just said, if one precedes the other, we need input from this.
And we have to fund these things and we have to figure out how it fits with the.
Yeah.
The IP and all of those things.
Absolutely.
There's a lot, uh, there's a lot of moving parts connected to all of these actions.
Yep.
And we're trying to integrate all those things because as many of you have pointed out, when we were going through this process. You know, those actions weren't smart objectives.
Mm hmm.
The whole point as we move forward through these is they're going to be translated into. St- steps that you know, this is the criteria that by which we're evaluating these things. This is by when they're due, this is what done looks like. All of those kinds of things are gonna be refined. As we move forward and bundle these things into work programs by year that we then fund.
Got it.
So there's a lot of heavy lifting going on behind the scenes right now to get that all pulled together.
So I would say two things. One, just to encouragement, one is um, that's really helpful. As you go through the process, I know you'll think this, but you know, there's public input.
Mm hmm.
And, and I understand the logistics of keeping things in the building and working together. To think about how those processes move forward to be implemented, those processes and those objectives and those goals. Being informed by public input initially. You may find a time, this is just me speaking, you may find a time where you're like, I'm not sure. We're gonna, it seems like we as a staff are making a call that might otherwise be assisted by the planning commission. Or some other input. And at those points, I would say, let's take a pause, let's come in and let's check ourselves. I don't know what that looks like exactly, but just, that's my, my thought. Second thing I'll mention is. As, as sitting on the board, it would seem to be very helpful to have the input of these folks. When you have those objectives and those priorities outlined, because so many of them are land use related. And I would find that to be helpful input. So if there's a way to weave in. Involvement of the planning commission as you review priorities, I would be a, a strong advocate for that.
Thank you for the feedback. So noted.
Thank you. Um, couple other quick things from, could you go back to your ti- thank you, Jody. Could you go back to your timeframe chart, timeline chart?
Sure. Do you want the larger one or the one that's in front of y'all?
The one you just had, that works. This one works. Yeah, this is great.
This one's a little harder to read at home, so.
No, this is great. So I'm focusing on the draft regulatory changes section. And actually, when I looked at this, first thing I saw, because it's like, you know, you, when you look at the price of whatever you're gonna buy, you drop to the bottom line first. I went right to twenty twenty-eight and I'm like, holy cow, that seems like a long time. And, and yet, as we've talked, I realized the complexity of this process. And as Ms. Filardo said, some of the predecessors that need to occur to get us to that point, right? So a lot of things are gonna be discussed over those two and a half years or so. The one section, and I know this is just kind of a graphic. For us to look at, the draft regulatory changes. Seems like it, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, it just, it seems like it goes from October, it's, it's October and November of twenty twenty-six. It feels short for that piece, but is it broader? Is it longer or intertwined?
This is not to, this timeline is not to scale. Um, that was just to, to fit it on the page.
Okay.
If you look, um, there is less than a year in the first half of the timeline. And then a year and a, and a, and a little bit more change for the second half.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just not to scale in order to fit it here.
Got it. Just if this gets shared at other places, understanding that the importance of those draft regulatory changes. Is critical and, and for, but someone who might be looking at this going, holy cow, they're only gonna spend two months. Or maybe someone smarter than me will be able to decipher that and understand it. Just making that really clear that this is gonna take time. And then also the meet with working groups is, is marked on here a couple of times, right?
Mm hmm.
Um, that I think is important and my, my thought, and I'm, I know I'm preaching to the choir here a bit, but. You know, we're shaping the physical future of our county with this. And it's a big lift, it's a big deal. And, and letting people under, having people understand that. Might help with populating those working groups and those opportunities for public input. So as you think about advertising, you know, what does this really mean? What does this look like? It's a big deal. And I think it's really, is, is really important. Um, and then I guess. I guess the last thing I'll mention, which has already been said, is, is just the importance of partnerships. And opportunities where, you know, as we met years ago now, we were talking about the housing. The housing Albemarle, and we were looking at incentives and going through a process with the dev- the development community in the room at the planning commissioners and the board of supervisors. Those kinds of work sessions I know are a heavy lift to try to organize. Um, but I think identifying whether it's the development community, whether it's fill in the blank, the state, the EDP, whatever it is. Bringing those to bear in this process to help identify opportunities, I think is really, is critical, as I think many of you have said. Um, I think that's mostly it for my rambling for this, at this point. The other, mine?
Yeah, so, so one thing I want to bring up is, you know, it's, the form-based code was brought up, you know, the, the idea of expanding that in the future. And I would hope that as we look at expanding form-based code or, or just looking at our regulations in general, that we can think about. How we can start to adapt that to the spirit and ideas of our comprehensive plan that we have now. Um, for example, including more sustainability elements, particularly where they don't really cost all that much more to include. Um, things that have been frustrating me to me for years, for example, is how we. We do those little parking islands, me, you know, we, we keep stormwater out of them instead of collecting stormwater in them. Doesn't really cost too much more to make them innies instead of outies. Um, and things like, you know, and, and I, I would hope that, you know, in, when we talk about landscaping and we talk about, you know, who we're including at the table. Um, just as an example for, um, there's many different ways to do landscaping. I mean, some people's idea of, you know, tree. Tree planting is, you know, plant a Bradford pear when it gets too big, top it and um, oh, and surround it with volcano mulch. So whose voice are we including in the room? We're talking about landscaping. Are we including people that have a, a mind towards sustainability? Um, you know, when we're talking about parking lots, whose voice are we including in the room to talk about the, the best design of a parking lot? Um, in keeping in mind our goals under the comprehensive plan when we're thinking about, you know, sustainability and, you know, climate change and so forth. So.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Questions of us from staff? All right. Thank you. Great job. All right, we are on to committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports to share? No, no. Commissioner Murray's looking.
Yes, yes, I do, I do. Just a, just a second, otherwise.
Scrolling, scrolling. By the way, you just. By the way, you described my front yard when you said volcano mulch. Bradford pears, but I'm not taking it first.
Oh, okay. I'll see. Just trying to go. Should I have this on?
No.
I'll just do this. I'll just, I'll just do it next time.
All right. I can mention a couple of that. So there was an all CAC meeting. I don't know who attended that. Let's see. Thought it was really interesting. It was a, back to community wellbeing profile. That was interesting, worth a read. It was the orange dot report. If you haven't, if all of you haven't read that, great to, great read. And then the community health assessment, map to health, also really excellent information. So it'd be worth taking a look at that if you haven't had a chance to. That was, it was the only, and then I have, there's a CAC meeting coming up, Fifth and Avon on Thursday, day after tomorrow. And one of, it's interesting, remember the filling the floodplain? It's coming back to us, a smaller amount, smaller acreage, a smaller area by like, I don't know, quarter of an acre, something like that, maybe. But it was, that was interesting. It was helpful for me to sort of re-review the minutes that was from our April 22nd meeting, I think, somewhere in April. It was good to look back on our conversation there and it was amazing. I mean, it seemed like it was a relatively straightforward application initially. And then I was scrolling through the minutes and there were pages. I think we talked about it for almost two hours, maybe even longer. So a lot of interesting information. And then the board was split three, three, which is why they're coming back. That's all I had.
Okay, you can look back to me now.
Watch us some time.
So I assume, yeah, if you go to the all CAC, yeah, it's probably got leaks. Okay, so, so the CCAC did meet on November 12th. And we also had a review of the, the all CAC meeting. And beyond that, there, there wasn't, there was, that was the main topic of what we discussed.
All right, we are moving on to review of board of supervisors meeting from October 30th. Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to, I neglected the beginning of the meeting to introduce Andrea Rugi, who is subbing in tonight for Jennifer Teavendale, who's off to Portugal. And we thank you so much.
This is better.
Andrea. Yes, we will have a, yeah, actually, port to afterwards. Anywho, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
The, I just wanted to touch, you talked about the Willam Mills fill in the floodplain to tell you that that is on the planning commission's agenda for December 16th.
Got it.
Just want to make sure I just picked up on that. Okay, so to review in the board supervisors meetings, there's actually two I need to cover. The first was the October 30th, which was the all CAC meeting. And you all basically just touched upon it. It was a presentation of community health and wellbeing and interesting presentation. The other one, the board did have a meeting on November 5th. There were no items that came before you all at that meeting. They did review two special exceptions for our futures. One was for a step back waiver, you know, something we've often waived or you all have talked about waiving. And maybe something in the zoning ward that's actually may go away. Or is we rewrite that? The other one was for a step back, was for building height to allow building height to go from 65 feet to 140 feet. So those are two items that the board reviewed on the 5th. There were also two presentations from my staff. One was our transportation quarterly report. And the other one was on the micro cap program and the, you know, its capacity to, to provide ride sharing in the Pantops and northern portions of our community. So those were covered on the 30th. You don't mind, I'll just go right into new business. I just wanted to make sure that a couple of things, our next meeting, I apologize, we reached out to you all at one point to see if we could do a work session at the next meeting. We thought we were going to like get booked on some stuff, other items moved around. So there is no need for a 4:00 PM work session next week. We'll, or yeah, next week we'll start at six. And the other thing is that right now I, we have Mr. Claiborne, Mr. Missel and Mr. Murray will not be here next week. So that leaves us with just four planning commissioners to have quorum. So I hope you all can attend next week. I just tried to underline, if somebody else can't make it, we'll have to cancel the meeting. So thank you.
Let me know if that, if you get to that point.
I understand you have the duties. We will try not pull you away from those.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions under new business. I'm curious, Mr. Barnes, I know, I guess January 1, we'll probably lose in a few colleagues from the dais here. Maybe it's three. I'm not sure how many, but do you know how those replacements are coming along in the queue? Do you have any insights on that?
I don't have a specific insight. I mean, I recognize that, that Mr. Pruitt needs to, to fill one of his seats and I'm not quite sure what's happening with the, the one with, I guess it'd be Karen, actually.
Christopher Firehawk, I think.
Who was nominated by Mr. Andrews. We still need to work out the details. I know the county executive's office been talking with some of that aspect.
Okay. And then just also thinking like, if there's a way that we can honor and celebrate folks here, I guess. It might whether it's that December meeting before folks go off to do their own things, their new futures. Well, you don't have to show up.
Thank you. Mr. Vivin, Mr. Vivin's would like the cake.
I'm not departing. I'm just still being.
Yeah, you just have a new future, a new future.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
Bringing that up. We'll be sure to do something.
And then lastly, I think there's a very special person in the audience who will be retiring at the end of this year.
And he's not even listening.
It's this year, right? January of 2026. All right, so you might as well ask this year. That's, that's close. That's pretty close. So it's one to publicly thank her. I think she's just been a tremendous asset to the county. And in my short tenure of maybe six years sitting up here, I just thank the world of her. So wish you all the best in your new future and I wish you a healthy and prosperous, was it prosperous? Yeah, yeah. Full of prosperity in that new chapter. So.
Well said.
Well said. More cake. More cake.
Yes, yes.
Neither one of us want cake.
All right. Any other new business?
I want to just share and thank someone and thank them publicly because I think that's a, so I assume all of us received this Ravanna River watershed stream and health report in our mail. And I have to just say, it is so helpful, whether or not I agree with everything that's in there. It is so helpful to get real data as opposed to emotion in my mailbox. And so I really appreciate and would like to call out the Ravanna Conservation Alliance for providing us with real data.
So, so you know, it's, it's also worth noting that it's not just data. One of the things about that is, is that that data is often used as leveraging to get funding that comes into our counties. So, you know, to the degree that we can, we have people out there doing fieldwork documenting that the stream is impaired, that, that documentation then allows us to provide for grants to help repair the streams. So.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So with that, I will adjourn us to November 25th, 2025 at 6:00 PM.